Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 17. It's 6:00 P.M. And we're going to have a work session. We get started, we begin to do the legislations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
We'd like to have a moment of silence to all the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as a servitor community here at the block. Thank you. The segments, can we have a roll call, please?
Justin McGuire.
Yes.
Justin McLaughlin.
Present.
Justin Beck.
Present.
Okay. So, under, first thing on the agenda under O Business is A R P funding. Uh, we were going to discuss in the previous meeting we had, but we never got a chance. In your packet, you'll see some paperwork on this. I just kind of briefly want to go over this in the work session. There's one that is on, in, there's one, there's two resolutions. And then a letter to Heidi from a legal firm that's taking care of, care of this activity with the O T A. Of the two resolutions you have, the one that, in the, on the top of it was adjusted to Jefferson Township, says the government county of Jefferson Township, is the first one you have to do. And the only difference between that one and the other one you have is on the third page. Uh, if you look, open it up, go to their page, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the board, that first number one, in this first, this one is the first one you have to do, uh, which is me, this thing using the standard allowance to use this money versus, um, all the other things that you could do with it. And then the second one, that verbage changed, it's in there, both in here, so...
The third, the top one is the third page, the one that allows me to make them the second page. Now therefore, the, um, my top...
Third page, yeah, that's what I said, the third page?
Oh, no. That's the one he's talking about there.
Yeah. I just will be, that's the only sentence different, that's the only sentence different, too.
Okay, so, so I can get this right? My top one, you say on the third page or the second page?
Third page.
So, is it right here, now there? That's my top?
Page one, page two, page three.
So, this was my top, now my second, okay, I got you. I just wanted to make sure I have my order when we do it.
The number one, uh, the number one statement, sentence after now therefore, is if you look at the other resolution that's in your packet, that sentence changes.
In compliance?
It's not the same, uh...
In page two, in compliance with, you...
Yeah, it's a little different.
At the bottom, second page.
So, the first one you have to, basically staying and using a thing called the standard allowance in your funding. So, you could go, there's another thing you can do, this American relief funding is to help with the, federal money to help with the COVID situation. And you go and have people that have been financially distraught, bothered, uh, lack of jobs, they lost their jobs, blah, 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 indeed, I started looking for that, I went to those meetings, the paperwork that is involved with that is a nightmare. This legal firm realizes the majority of townships will not fit this paperwork. And if you are, if you're under $10 million worth of benefits from the federal government in this, this application applies. So, what I'm kind of doing here is just introducing this paperwork, read it later, the letter to Heidi in there is very informative and gives a lot of guidelines. There's also, if you get on the O T A website, there's a tab for this funding, and there's a video under there. It's a very, it's about 45 minutes long, it's very, very informative. So, and I still believe that we, as trustees guys, cannot make the decisions, do not want to make any mistakes. Tracy, I know it's adamant about how this is federal money, it's different rules, and looking into this, it's a different ballgame. And we do need to use this legal firm, Baker Dubler, what was the name of his? But, um, excuse me, we want, definitely want to get a hold of Greg Beck. His contact information's on the O T A, you have phone number and a website. So, take some serious thought, trustees, between now and the next meeting. What you want to enter on the line. So, on that, this first resolution we're going to do, the one we spoke of, that has Jefferson Township written on it, they only give, so on the top of the third page, right above now therefore, they have three bank lines. And there's where you kind of, we put in there what we want money to do. Number two there is not to exceed, so you can put generalization in there. But what we do there, we need to kind of decide what we're going to do, and I think fill this out, send it to Greg with his blessing, get his blessing. And then let's move and rock and roll and make this money work for us. Thoughts, comments?
I think going, um, to the attorneys and using the money that, um, what we're getting to pay them makes a lot of sense. So, you're spending it where it should go instead of spending it and having to go back and redo some things.
Well, and looking at the federal rules on that, another thing we have to change, um, is the minimum, oh, is the... We have to, I think it is, a micro purchase on page two of Heidi's letter, under U G is, is the federal money, Uniform Guidance, U G refers to federal funds, Uniform Guidance. A micro purchase is federally limited to $3,500. We have another resolution, and they give us a template. So, when we, when we, probably want to do that one first, the next meeting, first one we want to do is, this resolution, they have a template, we up this micro purchase to, I believe you, I think you can go to 50,000? Yes. So, we go up to 50, we take that micro purchase, we as a township want to increase our micro purchase, bring whatever, and they have a template for this on their, on their, uh, the O T A website, to up that to 50 grand. And you want to, we want to do that, there's a suggestion you do that. So, it makes it easier to spend this federal, because this is all federal funds, and it is a different ballgame. Doug, Greg, you guys, once you've been listening to this, because this is, yes, this, I, I, what's your thoughts on this? There's money in there that we can, so, you know, this is for you two?
Does this have the restriction, Miss Edwards, of what the COVID money, COVID-19 or CARE Act, whatever it was, that you could not spend it on anything that was in a previous or current?
Correct, yes, in March...
This rest, American Rescue Plan money has the same stipulation?
Yes, there is, there is a date that it can't be before that. Um, there is a definite thing about communication of money. You can't, we don't even think about spending anything on any telephones, um, any, any kind of communications devices is a big no-no, that's, we don't even want to think about that kind of thing in this, and looking at what you can't spend on. But look at, look at, I'll send you this copy of this. Greg, Ohio, O T A, it's all on their website, all kinds of information. But we've got to take the time, get our head in this, and start making use of these funds that they gave us. But, so the first thing is, we will send a email out to Greg and, um, what about, so paying him?
That's what I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna ask. Do you have a resolution that says how much you're going to pay for doing that? Will he give you that amount?
Can you reach out and talk to anybody?
No, I don't, no, no, just...
Yes, reaching out to that firm and finding out how they charge, what their fee is, would probably be the best way to go. And then going from there.
And then, uh, what, what, what have other townships our size, what's the expense, what did they spend? You know, they do it for a tanned, and then they, you know, what's, what's, what, what do you have, I mean, is that a worth question to ask them? What, what, what do most town, how much time do you have in townships our size, and do they prepare that paperwork?
That's a good, that's a question you want to ask them.
I don't really, what do you think, though?
I, there, these are people who specialize in their grant, so I, I would assume they would have all the information that they would know exactly what they're dealing with. I don't think that an attorney's office would not kind of know off the bat what they're dealing with.
Absolutely, and these guys have dug this, the final draft, they know all about this, they made the presentation, this, this firm, though it wasn't Greg, this firm made the presentations for the classes I went to.
Okay.
They were, they're very involved with this money.
Okay.
So, we definitely want...
These are the same attorneys that, um...
They did the presentation, they did the presentation at the, um, O T A conference.
Yes.
And, um, they also prepared the presentation online, too. They had some other people, no, I think that was there.
Well, that 45 minute video is very important.
Right.
It's on the O T A site.
I mean, this is no different from hiring a grant writer, most likely they're going to come back with percentage of the total pot of money.
In the, in, in the presentations I went to, that was not the answer, they had made a deal with the O T A to do this, and it was, it was not going to be that. That wasn't quite fair for what they were doing. I, I'll be surprised if they say that, because that wasn't the impression they gave at the class.
We're going to go with the standard rates. Other than, uh, checking on our work, uh, there's not much to do. But we're going to go with the standard.
Correct. But, uh, okay, so when we filled in the blanks, you've already made a resolution. We want to do the, uh, the, the resolution for the micro, micro purchasing, the micro purchase, do the resolution for that, and we just fill in the blanks, does that look okay? Who's the first resolution we're going to do, same, we're going to use the money, um, in the standard, um, process, so there, yeah, they, they made this resolution up, is that okay? And then the last, the thing would be, okay, so we want to do A, B, C, and D. Do these projects with this amount of money look okay? So, I plan on reaching out to these people between now and then. What do you think I need tonight to be able to start communication with the legal firm, Tracy?
So, my understanding is that we, we, if they're working Maggie when I take the training, we use that, huh? We stick with the, and I know you said this already, the hundred, the hundred, for the one man, what is it? The first off, standard, I forget the, 10 million?
10 million, yes, so if you get, we did, and that's what I'm saying, all the, all the townships to do that. If you have 10, under $10 million of the funding, which we do, you can use that standard allowance, which gets you away from that, the way I, first way I said it, where the thing started, this whole project, A R P money, started with all that extra paperwork and, and, and finding the people, yeah.
So, I, so, what I'm saying is, what I understand in my training is all we have to do is say we want to do, say that, use that standard.
Yes.
Then we have to make sure whatever we put in our list or what we get, that it qualifies in the A R P, so meets the requirements. There's not much you have to do once you do that.
So...
So, for now, we have to do a resolution to say we're going to hire the attorneys to be able to help us with the spending. Is that what we need to do as far as going forward?
Well, there's probably going to be a proposal, I mean, we can do a simple vote to, uh, get a proposal from them and start the relationship, but they're going to have some sort of service agreement or something with us, so...
Then you do a resolution at that point, once you get that, right?
Yeah, we can make a motion tonight in the regular meeting to proceed on and get a R I P or whatever, Jim. But I agree with you, the fact, the fact that they've already stepped out in, in the O T A's papers, I mean, they've already, the fact that they've already made these, these resolution templates, and it's basically fill out the blanks, I think about the time that's going to take them to take care of our needs is not very much. I don't see it being a very big bill.
Uh-uh, because they wouldn't want to take all the money and play, and we can use it either, definitely.
Same here.
They wouldn't want to take all our money, because we need it more.
Yeah.
Yeah, for...
I mean, if you engage the firm, they're going to probably rewrite fees or put their mark on it, or whatever, so, we shouldn't be pa, if we're going to engage a firm, then we, they need to hook these and sign off on them before we do anything with it.
Okay, well, so I just say we make a motion to, uh, somehow start a relationship with, um, Baker Dubler, Attorneys in Law, in the regular meeting.
What is your A R P funding? Help manage the A R P funding, to be a consultant's life with A R P funding, on what we might spend it on.
Okay, yeah.
So, with that...
I mean, because everything I, everything I've said, everything I've seen states that their fee completely come out of this funding.
Right, there's no, no doubt about it, if they get coronavirus, too.
Uh-huh.
They're getting out coronavirus, too.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, I still follow around the same thing, so, with that being said, though, I'm still part of discussion, do you guys, have you guys started a list, or is that something you guys still got to do? Or do you guys go give it to them?
I've got to start them all, I, so, all four trustees make one, the fire department needs to make one.
Well, okay, but the fire department is a lot to figure out. Because there are always some things we know about.
So, Jim, is there anything that you got? Jim, did you submit a list?
Well, not knowing what the threshold, this gives me some ideas to work with.
So, so, I guess again, I ask, when are you going to start putting this together? I'm saying this because there's also some other money beside this A R P fund that we need to have a list. Not only are we focusing on the guidelines of this A R P, of the county, and Mike, you were in a meeting with him, or I was in a meeting with you, whatever you want to say, and he says he had money for us, and we, and this has been over a month over, how long ago happened, when we had that meeting? And we need to try to jump one before the other townships in the county. I mean, it wasn't specifically for us, he just told, he gave us a heads up that there's money there. And we, and we need to, that list, and that list we need to also consider, even though it may not fit in an offer, maybe to go to the county, maybe it'll...
So, what you're saying is the next meeting, you want us to come with a list of the items that we want for consideration? And, um, is that right?
Yes.
And then at the next meeting, we're going to, um, kind of bring our list together and then make a decision next off of that, right?
I mean, I think we need to get this firm on board because, and then have them weed out the list. I mean, that saves us a lot of time.
Well, we need to have the list, but then we get them on board, we still need to have it, we keep putting it off wait, two weeks, two weeks, and be months, two months, three months, and...
For our, because I did, our Harrison Township hasn't been spending any money either, so, and they're trying to figure out how they're going to spend theirs, but they've already gotten the attorney, so...
But I mean, well, we should be, then we could be the first ones to get it, and then we might get more. It's just, hey, we get this, 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 and everybody else gets...
I agree, I, I wonder, starting to get it moving, so that, because we have doors that we need, and some other things we need. So, in the regular meeting, what we're going to do?
We need to start the engagement process with, uh, with this vendor.
Yeah, okay.
And will you do that, Mike, or will you, or do you?
Yeah, just make a motion, you know, you can do the motion, yeah.
I mean, as far as engaging the attorneys, you could do that, okay?
Well, I'll be calling Greg first. Having a fun conversation with him, it's going to be, then we can mail it to you, you have it on paper.
Yeah.
This is calling first, you, we'll send you an email, we'll talk about you, blah, blah, blah. Any more conversations on A R P? Yeah. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda for O Business was a, I, I put this on here, I wasn't sure if we'd finished this, a resolution for the Lucas Device Contract, was that? I, I thought there was still some conversation on that.
There was some, true.
So, Lisa wrote a, um, a resolution, and she gave it to me, and I gave her comments back what she needed to change on, but then I never saw another copy. And she was expecting me to bring it, or she was going to give it to one of you guys, or what? So, that's...
Well, just reach, reach, okay, so reach out to Lisa and find out what's, what's up with that, and we'll make it happen.
Looking on our notes?
Okay. Next one is road department personnel. We have, uh, as we, as you know, we hired, uh, a school of people last week, one person last week, and, um, so we have, um, a superintendent at full time, two part time, and we're making good progress. Uh, we got our kettle fired up, uh, yesterday, so, uh, we're really making a goal to be doing some major asphalt patching, uh, working on, uh, getting some prices on some bigger spots on roads, or some roads, uh, lands down, knocks, that have spots in them that we all know are too bad to be done by hand, they might be done with paper. We don't know the paper, so we'll be subbing that work out, and, um, I'm working on that. Um, any, so, I know we had a resolution to hire a new administrator, do we have any comments we want to talk about that?
Uh, well, um, we need to go back and, uh, make sure we have some type of employment agreement in place.
Okay.
Um, and that was, um, I looked over that little piece, and so, um, when I get the, um, employment contract together, I'll send it to Lito and you all, and you can look it over, and so, but, um...
Are you going to call it an agreement or a contract?
It's a co, I'm sorry, an agreement, did I say contract?
Yeah.
I mean, agreement, because, um, per the job description is not a contracted, uh, position. And so, um, I think she was, the, um, she thought that it was a contracted position, so we have to do some revisions, um, and we have, have to work with her to try to...
So, the decision is to take standard, copy and paste, a piece of paper then, I mean, you had to write something up that's different than other things, or not?
No, I mean, well, I, I think we have to take in consideration, as a, as the administrator, there are a couple of things that the administrator gets that regular employees don't get. I mean, um, this person has to go to different meetings, she need a vehicle, um, um, she has use of, would be able to use vehicles and things like that, so that would be something that regular employee would be getting. So, she'll have access to those things. So, just think about all the things, well, I won't say all the things, but some of the things that our previous administrator had. So, she would need access to a vehicle to get around, like a Porsche, and those kind of stuff.
So, if the previous administrator drove a Blazer, and it is back on the road, it's drivable, it is high in miles, and, um, I'm not sure if I would put her in that, but...
Well, I'm guessing if she can either choose, or, um, we could, um, either she could use one of the vehicles, or we would have to pay her, uh, gas, yeah.
So...
It's going to have to be one or the other, and, um, she may reference that, but I don't think she knows the vehicles.
Yeah. So, you also have to consider, you also have to consider if we do give her a vehicle, um, and if she still has, uh, her, um, we wouldn't have to put that, um, on, our access, that go on her W2 phone.
Right.
We did, we did do that with the previous, we didn't know what's going to happen with that, so that's something I'm going to worry about when it comes up, but we need to do it right.
What is picture of the administrator by the seat of the hotel?
I mean, like, in, like, like the fire chief for, the fire chief? Yeah, but for township to go from home to work and back, no, no personal, it's...
Well, we gotta just, we gotta just travel to...
So, the Blazer, the, the, the brakes are fixed on the Blazer, I mean, it stops on a dime, it starts and all that. I'm just a little bit leery of the number of miles on it. I mean, the fact that it sat for so long, and the fact of the number of miles on it, I'd be afraid to stick a, if, if it was a young guy, mechanically inclined dude, uh, and not, not like it's men and women, but, you know, just mechanic, if I was driving it, and, you know, something happened, it upped or side or if I text, or vice versa, you know, but it, I don't know if I would put, I really just don't know for sure if I would put it in that vehicle. She can drive a little bit and give her some opinion on it, and then, whatever we do, I just throw that out there.
Why? Well, then a question would be is, if that's the case, and it's not good, can we afford another vehicle? The choice is either have or have that, or use her own vehicle.
Exactly, and pay their minds, at the end of the day, it's going to be her choice, because I personally wouldn't want to drive that Blazer or that truck that I drove back.
That truck's in better shape, we could do, we could do some work to it, but then, but then again, I really don't agree with that truck, because that truck comes in handy for the road guys, that, that truck does come in handy for, for doing things, so, um, but, we have a couple of vehicles that I may be able to sell and then buy some. So, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that, so, we'll hope so.
Yeah, okay, I'm not sure what she'll choose, but it's up to her, maybe after she sees what she might be getting, and...
I mean, the choice currently is drive her own vehicle or drive the Blazer, that's the, that's the only choices we have right now.
Yeah.
What vehicle, you say your vehicle? You didn't say that?
Yeah, or a Ford in the garage, no.
Okay, anything else, uh, the administrator, questions, comments, statements?
Oh, yeah, they, that was in discussion, that, I bet she's not going to start it anytime soon, but I...
Uh, probably till June, yeah, because I don't want to rush it, I don't want to, the township to get signed up with... I don't want to the township to get signed up with something that we're not gonna, wanna make sure that. And so I'm gonna see, whenever I get the employment agreement, I'll submit it to legal. Um, and the trustees, they can look it over and whatever, that way that'll give us time. So the next meeting, we can say, okay.
And then, um, now, this is another. Code enforcement, I got a call today and he doesn't want to start to the first of June.
Oh, okay, yeah, I asked him, I called him this morning, I asked him to call you.
He said he didn't want to start to the first of June.
I'll find him that, okay.
The other two guys, um, I think you got both of them in, on Paycor or one in the Paycor?
We did, the next skill, you bow and.
We did, we did, so Charles didn't call me. I thought it was a meeting with you, but I don't have a number anyway.
Now, he was, he was here, both numbers supposed to be here, they found at four o'clock.
So they're probably gonna come tomorrow. Well, I know, I know Rob is coming.
Yeah, he could go at four o'clock.
Right, um, I don't know, I guess Charles is coming tomorrow. I didn't know what you had him working with, but I sent them emails to get them onboarding. So I'm hoping when I go back home, they've started it. And they may not have to me, like, I didn't have to me with the administrator. She sent me everything over the email, we got it all done.
And I think, I, I, I will say, that was good, you got, you worked that really well. She got all her information and you had it and it wasn't a whole lot to it. It's good.
Other than we have the same issue about the email, um, invalid domain, I had a call, I have to go Paycor and then they have to do it.
Is it because they run after their personal one?
Yeah, because I don't have, I didn't have, they didn't have them. Township one, and I don't know if it's just because of the personal one or.
Well, they were, they were both set up yesterday. And the problem was the one, and that's why I keep hearing four o'clock or three, four o'clock, I haven't got that fixed. It's an issue, but their junction emails are up and running.
Okay, so I can see. Oh, well, it's probably just a personal initial last name, I mean. And I can always search in the global.
But they're up and running.
So I sent, currently, I sent the onboarding to their email that was on their application. And.
One gentleman lately had eighteen thousand five hundred seventy-nine hundred emails. So I would stay away from our personal emails.
Well, I let him know it was there, so, yeah. Before, before I did it, so, yeah, I understand that, it's definitely Yahoo or something.
Yeah, exactly. It was a Gmail, they got them.
Okay.
I've got an issue under old business. I've got the, uh, Dinkler Resolution here tonight again. This is back, have you got any questions? Out of the way, have you come up with a not to exceed threshold? We can put into that so you're more comfortable with that resolution.
Yes. Um, thirty-five hundred, I mean, thirty-five thousand.
Okay, I'll, um, bring it up in the meeting and read that into the resolution.